Good morning, it is nine thirty-five. I would like to call the October tenth meeting of Athabasca County Council to order. The first thing I would like to do is welcome Mr. Robert Beck as a CIO and to our first meeting. And thank you for joining the team and agreeing to lead the team of excellent people that work here. Welcome. Um, next on the list is the approval of the agenda and that's item number two point one. The items that must be discussed, I have three point one. Eight point two. I was would like to discuss ten point one W and then all of item eleven. Are there any other additions? Three point one eight point two. And seven point four. Seven.
I'd also like to add five point one per discussion, please.
Okay, five point one, sorry, and seven point four. Let me. Let's come on. Moved as amended. Um, we're not Kate, not quite ready because I haven't given everybody the opportunity to add. So are there any other additions, deletions? Coster Minz. Any others? A um, unrelated to seven point four, that's essentially the reconsideration of a motion, the way that's worded. And that one should be deleted. I will propose that's deleted from the agenda because it doesn't meet the requirements of the procedural by law to be brought back within thirty days. Others? Okay, so going over the list. We have item number three point one, five point one, seven point one, seven point four is delete. Eight point two. Ten point one F, ten point one K, ten point one L. Ten point one W and ten point one AC plus items eleven point one, two and three. Council Chrome has moved the adoption of the agenda as amended. There's no further discussion on the motion of the adoption of the agenda as amended, all those in favor. Opposed, the motion is seven and one and carried. Counselor Gerlick, I don't know if I said this out loud, extends his regrets, he will not be at today's meeting. Item three point one is I had reviewed the minutes and on page five of your agenda under the call to order the words Director of Community and Protective Services, Krista Wilkinson. It seems to me that needs to include either that she entered or introduced somebody or something happened there that needs to be recorded. Does anybody know what that was? Uh, five of your agenda. Right under call to order. That could be what happened. So that's what should say in there. Krista Wilkinson introduce CPO something.
Mr. Chairman, um, clarification is uh, that she entered the meeting at that time.
Okay, did she introduce somebody as well? Pardon me, did we have her introduce the new CPO? Okay, so she entered the meeting. So with that amendment, is there any council, chance? Council Chamsik has moved, we approve the minutes as amended, any discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the minutes as amended, all those in favor. And the count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Five point one, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to direct administration to draft the required bylaw and supporting documents for the implementation of the clean energy improvement programs for review at the November committee of the whole meeting.
Counselor Anderson has made a motion to direct administration to draft uh, the bylaw and other to draft the required bylaw and supporting documents for the implementation of the clean energy improvement program for review at the November committee of the whole meeting. Ms. Blair, did want me to read it again? It's written down if you need it. On that question discussion. Director Whaley, do you want to speak?
Through the chair with respect on average for a bylaw of this magnitude, uh, the average timeline for being able to draft it and getting the correct legal is about four to six months. Could we have more than November?
That's uh. Would there be any objection to stretching that out to uh? February?
We'll bring it back sooner. If we get it back sooner, I just, I I don't believe I can deliver it by November.
There should be a lot of cutting and pasting from other ones that exist already, but um, let's go back to the move.
Uh, for review prior to the March Committee of the whole meeting.
So is there any objection to making that amendment to prior to the March Committee of the whole meeting? So Leah, Ms. Blair, you just swap those language. Cause Holland, you had.
Thank you. Um, as I was going through and reading more about this uh, program, um, and of course our administrative report, um. I am struggling a little bit with um, bringing this to the county in this form, although of course clean energy is something um, that we really need to be focusing on. I understand that, but I do agree in the report that this is another uh, downloading from the uh, GOA, which I'm finding we are already struggling with um. Our, um, I guess our resources for staffing, for people to administer this. Um, I was looking further at it. Uh, we have, if I'm not mistaken, it was through the Alberta municipalities website. Twenty-seven municipalities have passed this out of about three hundred plus. Um, which tells me that it's not very popular. Um, currently twelve have active programs, which again tells me it's not that popular. So then what I'm seeing is the cost to the municipality to administer this type of program. And I'm seeing a huge liability should someone default on one of their loans and then of having to go and collect. Um, we're now turning into becoming more of a bank rather than a municipality. So I am not in favor of this particular program, the way it completely rolled out. I am in favor of Broad Zoo County, uh, page sixty to sixty-three, I think, did an amazing thing. And they put on their website exactly what the Alberta government is willing to offer and they're willing to help their people uh, in their residents in their community, deal with that and and look at the clean energy and that they can provide. Um, I made all kinds of notes on this one and I am just not in favor of this particular program as it sits. Again, I worry about the different things that happen when when things go into a rear, how those collections uh, take place. We've seen the foreclosures and and whatnot come through and how difficult that was and how with how that impacts our taxpayers and our revenues. So until we can look at a more equitable, I guess, and we need to start pushing back to the Alberta government and say, hey, look, we can't afford all the things that you're downloading. These are your programs. These are really important for our communities to take part in, but make it easier for municipalities to be able to do that. So I'm not in favor.
Thank you. Other comments? Uh, you were good. The final word is a mover, the motion. Anyone else? Consumins, for yours?
Excuse me. Yeah, I agree with that. Uh, I was, I had kind of like the same thoughts. How much time and 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 costs is gonna be through administration to to uh, put this funding through and and what does happen if somebody revokes from from paying all of a sudden, what what happens there? How how does this? So it's good for discussion to figure that out. I would really like to know what it's going to cost us for administration to put this forward.
Counselor Chams.
What happens if they do go bankrupt? What happens to the ownership of the land? Are we?
Uh, it's the uh, Director Whaley will confirm this, but this is a charge against the title of the property. So it's actually probably one of the best types of uh, security you can find because it's a special lien. It takes priority over even the property holders mortgage. And um, and we have all the same collection processes that are available through the tax collection. So it's just something that gets collected with property taxes. Anything to add to that, Director? Before I call the question or give the final word to the mover, I think that, you know, in the in the bit of research I've done in other municipalities, the the default, um, the default rate would be fairly low, given um, the folks who are putting this on or or running through a qualification system. They've had to have their taxes up to date for a number of years. Um, I think also because we have the the superior charge against the property, there's a lot of protection for the municipality. And uh, and then in the, you know, when I've talked to, for example, the town, there's been an uptake that allows the them to influence the behavior of residents, but it hasn't been a gigantic uh, hundreds and hundreds of people. It's been, you know, a slow, steady uptake. So there's not the administrative costs. They don't think they're uh, based on my discussions with them are are fairly low. But answering those questions is a good reason to push up this bylaw forward to committee, the whole. We do have a standing motion already to to do this and and the uh, that was made, I think, almost two years ago that we're waiting on admin to do. Um, and you know, with our strategic plan, we have uh, talked about investing in our infrastructure and environment, maintaining safe and reliable infrastructure, reducing the carbon footprint. This really connects directly to a lot of that. And so I think as we explore it, it's worth, it's worth exploring. Uh, we've got a lot of steps before we actually implement it to pull the plug, but I think it's worth carrying on down the path to to do that because of its alignment. And nothing in the proposal uh, would stop council or an administrator from proposing an alternate program to run parallel to it like the uh, one in Brazo County or another municipality. I think Black Lebiche County has something similar to that. If there's no final words, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Um, previously council has directed administration to complete the application process and report to council with further steps required to implement the program. We are very clear. We wanted to go down this this road to continue with the steps to implement the program. It aligns quite well with our strategic plan and our strategic priorities. And there are a lot of properties in our municipality that are starting to age. They're started, they're going to need these improvements soon. And this is another way that residents can pursue making those improvements. And have it be a financially viable option because the cost of everything is escalating and having these options available to our residents to ensure that some of these residences within our municipality can be improved and maintained and continue to have residents reside in them is really important. And I think this is a great program to pursue.
I have your sheet, please. On the uh, question of the adoption of the motion to move uh, direct administration to draft the required bylaw and supporting documents for the implementation of the CEIP for review at for review before the March Committee of the whole meeting. All those in favor? Opposed? The count is six and two, the motion is adopted. Item number seven point one, Counselor Minz, you asked for that to be on the agenda.
Yeah, just to get some uh, clarification. Hmm, what uh, what did we do last year? Did we pay for the the two mayors to go to to uh, to the thing and then the our reef went to the AB munis who paid for that.
Uh, so the second part of the question I can answer, and I think Ms. Blair can answer the first. Um, the AB munis was paid for by the village of Boyle and the town of Athabasca. I'll be bringing to the committee, the whole um, the update section. All I intended to bring sort of a report on that to you because there's a number of things there that that just from attending the sessions, I I think were valuable that I'll I'll share. But uh, but there's on that particular conference, there's no cost Athabasca come. Okay, and last year, Ms. Blair, do you have the memory of, I think we paid for rooms and hotels or sorry, the hotel and registration of the folks we took with us. I know uh, when we sat down with um, the Minister of Municipal Affairs, uh, her comment right off the bat, I think, was where's Colin? Um, because we had so often spoken together and acted as a, as a, you know, a region that she just want to say she'd never seen us apart. Is that Counselor Holland, you're at the floor when comes from means relinquishing.
Well, I guess, yeah, that's 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 a good, good answers and not too anyway, but I I just wish we could, we could get to a point where user pay, if it's that important for them to come to uh, the fall RMA and the spring RMA, maybe they should look at paying. Maybe we should be looking at paying for for our Reeve to go to AB munis and then that way nobody pays for anybody. Everybody pays their own way. And I think it's very important to be regional and all all that stuff, but I also think it's very important that people pay their way if they want to be there, pay for it and come along. It's it's, I don't understand why we're going to keep jostling back and forth and back and forth. Everybody just pay their own way and the way we roll. It's like buying people's lunches and and suppers and stuff.
And I I recognize that I've aired in that I haven't asked for a motion to come to the floor. So the first thing, do you want to move a motion on and so?
I'm willing to move the recommended motion.
Now, speaking to that, Counselor Holland, you have the floor.
Thank you. I know there's always a concern when it comes to the the public person. We need to be very vigilant about that and respectful of it. And and I totally, you know, understand where you're coming from, and I also understand where we've all is coming from and the benefits that do come alongside. As you mentioned, it was, you guys travel in threes where, you know, it was almost like it was the start of something, building momentum for other communities to do the same. And as reported by our fine reporter over here, we have in the in Woodland County also is doing, starting to do the same thing. And so it's becoming more and more popular for uh, communities who are regionalizing and working together to show the government that, hey, we're we are stronger in numbers, we're stronger together. Um, and so because of that, and I at one time was, oh, this is a little, you know, we're spending a little bit too much uh, irresponsibly. But on the other hand, now that I've seen seen it in action and seeing it gaining popularity um, and seeing that there are benefits that are coming out of it, um, I am in favor of the motion.
Okay, I said uh, two for Counselor Capitanic and Counselor Cromwell has the on deck.
I'm I'm in favor of the motion, but I actually uh, will think that um, it would be disrespectful to change it now if you say you know, decided you're going to just pay for yourselves because you've already gone. But for next year, I think that um, it could, it should be explored that it does seem reasonable if if it's going to be continuous and it becomes a thing that each municipality pays for their own person. And that would just honestly, I think, be easier on their bookkeeping, like two are splitting you and then they're doing this and and all that extra. So totally worth looking at. And I was just looking at it next year before conferences and then talking to our regional partners, maybe at a tri council before that. Um, so that's just an idea on the floor.
Counselor Cromwell, you have the floor.
Well, my friend to the left had very good points that I wanted to chat about. I cannot. I I see the benefit, but I cannot continue to pay for other municipalities to attend a conference for their own benefit as well on the backspare rate pairs. And I think that very much the town and the village have the building, have the means to pay for their own attendance in that, and I will not support this motion.
Any further discussion? I mean, I I guess the the one comment I would add is that um, relative to everything we've got on the go and the depth of our relationships, I would view these as relatively small expenses. And uh, certainly that are more than made up by the choice of hotel. Uh, depending on, you know, choosing A or B hotel, we can uh, cover that. And and I think as a municipality, we benefit and just as a reminder, we were the ones that asked them. They didn't come to us saying, can we come with you? We asked them to join us to to lobby together because many of the things that are on our list of uh, concerns that we want to address with our our provincial government have a cross municipal impact and it's a lot harder for them to blow us off when there are three municipalities standing there saying we're in complete alignment on this. And I would like us, I'd like to see us get to the point, not where we bring summer villages with us, but where we know them and have the relationships with them well enough that we can say we also know that, you know, the the mayors and councils of our eight summer villages stand behind what we're doing. Counselor Chams, you have the floor.
Given the timelines and everything, I am in favor of the motion this go around, but I really, really think uh, uh, Counselor Capitanic for bringing it up to the table for next year and have that discussion. And I think tri council would be an appropriate place to do that. And I think uh, you know, the great work that uh, the tri councils have done together is something to be commended and good job.
Counselor Anderson, final words before I call the question. Oh, cuts her.
May we amend the motion to add this also be forwarded to try counsel uh, for discussion?
I think just add it to the agenda.
Just add it.
Just add it. When we, when we next schedule our tri council agenda, just put it on your.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
January, okay, Counselor Anderson, comments? On the question, the adoption of the motion to invite the town of Athabasca Mary and the village of Boyle Mayor to attend the fall RMA convention scheduled November seventh to ninth and cover their costs of registration and hotels, all those in favor. Sorry, hands, opposed. The count is six and two, the motion is adopted and we are on to calendars, eight point two. Not even get to a coffee break. Um, after Wallack, you're going to have the floor, but just slow down for one second. There's something I need to bring up that I didn't. Hey, go ahead. Okay.
Uh, October thirteenth, farm women planning. At nine thirty, uh, ASB has farm women on the thirteenth. Um, ASB has moved from the eighteenth to the twentieth. Um, Regional Economic Development Committee on the nineteenth. And
Oh, you know, you still have the floor. Um, Counselor Chamsik, why don't we just go down the list and then loop back up?
Sure, I don't really have anything to add. Unfortunately, on the thirteenth, I have a conflict of uh, scheduling and I will not be able to attend the executive meeting.
Uh, Counselor Holland, floor is yours.
Thank you. The uh, Athabasca Landing Trail, uh, next meeting is tentatively scheduled for November seventeenth, nine thirty AM.
Sorry, November seventeenth, the trails, Athabasca Landing Trail. Consumins. Nothing, cause Chrome will. Counselor Capitanic. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I'd like to call a committee of the whole meeting for November twenty-first at nine thirty AM.
Committee of the whole, November twenty-one at nine thirty AM. Okay, we move backwards, Counselor Capitanic.
Um, we uh, over email as uh, due to
Council. Okay, council budget and finance for the twelfth of October.
Our next one was scheduled for November second.
Um, so what she said is the uh, next budget finances November second, and just to confirm that's still on track. The one item that I wanted to uh, the the offer that came, uh, so we have a, there's a local company called Trident Pump. They have uh, been working on uh, solutions for moving fluids, specifically water and wildfire mitigation, structural protection, water shuttling and other things like that. Um, they have decided to participate in the RMA trade show. And uh, with the view that to quote them, this is a critical opportunity to showcase their solution and to a vast audience. And um, of course, it's a fairly expensive event for them. They think their presence there is going to be useful and they wanted to invite us to uh, come to their shop at a time. We request your presence for at our business for a demonstration at your convenience prior to the show. And welcome anyone who we think might benefit of understanding what Trident Pump has to offer. Partly because they're they're local. I think they're thinking, you know, if we're there, we will be familiar with them so that we can see what they're up to. I've been familiar with them for a long time. I think it's pretty cool that we got somebody in in our region that's uh, working on this type of solution. So really the question is, is there a day that suits everybody before RMA that we could go spend, you know, part of an afternoon? I don't think you'd want to plan more than about an hour, an hour and a half and just say, we've got an hour and I'm wondering if like this the twenty-fourth would work after MPC. So if I propose to them. So I'll tentatively reach out to them and say that we'll we'll pit, we've penciled that in and whoever can make it can make it.
Um, the regional healthcare committee uh, meeting on uh, October thirtieth at ten thirty.
Perfect. Regional healthcare on October thirtieth at ten thirty. Any other items to adjust on the calendars? Um, the other one I had a note here was to ask about um, budget open house. And uh, in the past, we talked about trying to organize a an open house around our budget prior to its approval. Um, given that uh, the target is to have budget fairly far advanced when we get back from RMA, is there uh, should we be, are you ready to talk about a possible date now? You know, at the end of November to do that. I know it kind of puts a some pressure on us and admin to get it to a place where we're we're ready to take it for approval in early December, but I think we can be at a place where we're fairly confident of what the the big stuff in it is when we get back from RMA, Counselor Chamsik.
I know it sounds crazy, but what about sometime in early December, you know, after hunting season?
I would say we should do it at night and most of the hunters I know don't hunt in the dark, so. Counselor Minz, the best. It's good thing your mic's not on. Of course, we know you're joking, Cole. Should we, would it be reasonable just to kind of ask admin to look at a date and um, I kind of wondered, you know, do we want one to one in grassland, one in Collington or no, just one? One in town? Based on the last open host, we have this room will be too big. We can move it to the river view room, but. That's wrong. I I'm just asking, do you want to pick something that's better?
That's yeah, CSS conference, yeah.
Whatever works best.
Administration. CIO, any comments? No, it's early, but.
No, Ms. Chairman, just a matter of um, have a time for prep, that's all.
So if we. So if we, is anybody that twenty ninth or thirtieth kind of is the target dates in one of those states? And that gives us some time before the next council meeting. And leave it to admin to council hall.
So the only concern that I have with just having the one open houses, we do have such a vast. County for people to travel. So in in speaking and in in that. If we are sticking to having one place in the county, one meeting, is there a way we can somehow share the information online? As if we have placards, if we have something like that, so that other people are able to go in and have a look at it prior to. Or maybe just that day and then have it up for a week and they're able to comment and and provide their input if that's.
Come meet your counselor. You know, we'll be here then, but you could see that.
Just just to be able to, you know, stretch it out to to our far north, south, east, west people.
I'm open to actually two nights, so I I take lead from. Everybody else in terms of what we want to do. Um if we split the same four people up over two nights, it's kind of a waste, but if you know, if we were. At grassland or Presveda Hall or something people can, you know, easily find um and maybe. You know, I recognize that something we haven't as a county done a lot of in the past and and so there's this, you know, people have to have to be kind of get used to the idea that it's gonna happen, but also um. Al- also. It's a way to test whether really the appetite for for people to to attend those. Uh the one of the courses I did last um. I did, I did one of the EO EP courses prior to the AB Munis Conference. And one of the the things that was in there around budget, they were, and I'll I'll share this more tomorrow because it's not great coming off the top of my head, but. Older engagement. Council getting down into sort of overwhelmed by details, council's kind of a tendency to, you know, get right into the weeds, which we'll talk about tomorrow. And third um. The third piece I'll have to refer to my notes uh because I'm a spot on gone blank. But the insufficient stakeholder engagement, I mean, I think, you know, I. The idea that we can go to our rate pairs and say, here are the services we provide and. Through a couple of these courses, there's some interesting ways. It's not just lay the budget out on a table, but saying. Even not even the dollars, it's what what what's valuable to you, what's and maybe even this is a discussion we can include in tomorrow's call kind of as a discussion case.
I know with some of the feedback that uh I've gotten, like even with their strap line and everything else that. The appreciation of it going. East and west and not just centralized in town is definitely there, it definitely be open to budgets in. Grassland, wandering river, castle and whatever works, you know, something. On both sides or, you know, and get that uh public engagements, I really feel people seeking.
Let's go.
I'm willing to venture one and at grassland. Um I think that that's a good essential location and I I doesn't have to be here, but I then you could have the. Placards set up here for people to come and will drink business hours, but if you are going to go down the path. Of two or three where you think that that's going to bring more people, then I would highly recommend you make it different times. Have a morning one and you know, or a day one and evening one, because you just have the same time, the same people that made of. The other four people that might have come um would say, well, I couldn't because they're both in the evening. And so I think if you're gonna. You're gonna go that far, make it as much variety as possible. But I would, as our first one, offer one. One evening, one location, and then as Catherine Holland said, how the information available here, it's available online. If the feedback is, well, if you would have had more, we would have come, then we can look at that for next year, but we're also considering all our administration time. Their evenings, their overtime and. We have to weigh that balance of benefit. I did a, I truly believe our rate pairs know how to get hold of us. They're great at getting hold of us when they have questions. I know that people in my community are never afraid to ask. And I think that there can be a little bit more balance with getting out there, but definitely don't have to overdo it.
Councillor Walk.
Yeah, I'd be more uh in favor of doing something more central in town. Um you move it to grassland, that's forty five minutes for my residents to get there from the west, from the south to. So it's not very central for a lot of people either, so I would recommend. Central more so than east. Um I don't think it's fair to the people in the west and the north on the other side.
That's criminal. And count to that, it's not fair for the people in the far areas to always come. This way, I think we do need to split it up. We have to be responsible and fair to our repairs in all areas of the county. And I would be in favor of doing two and then like councillor Captain said. Look at it for future budgets and vary our times and see what interest there is out there. But if you're not going to try and give them the benefit and the opportunity to come. Then what service are we doing for residents up in my earth? An hour drive each way. How about we uh give them the courtesy and bring something their way and bring something to the other outlying districts that need it as well?
Okay, so where where should we leave that with admin to um organize something and come back to us with a couple ideas, having.
This chairman, um the citizens budget uh survey is something I'm very familiar with, so what I would suggest we do is uh. Um, there's not a lot of time between now and budget adoption in December. Proceed with what you think is appropriate for the region, for the for the county. Um but in the meantime, we'll do some research and bring back some options from some of the other counties that some other counties are ahead of us on this. So it's just a matter of what process. Do you think would fit our county and and it's usually a survey of some sort, it's always a survey and it's what kind of survey? You know, and when, when is it most appropriate? It's usually uh. You know, it's appropriate when you're going into your next budget and you need to gather that input. And it's not fair to only give them two weeks. You need to give people some time and really advertise it to make sure they participate, so. Maybe we'll do some research and bring back three of the top examples that. We could find from other counties that are ahead of us and how they do it and maybe we'll just. Ask council which one they prefer and what time of the year.
So the plan is to try to organize a meeting somewhere, provide some advice to us on that and then also to do this other. Research and. I was made aware at this course, just for everybody's interest, Black Lippish County has an interesting app that you can go with, you can. Fiddle with their budget on and if you said, oh, I want to double the number of times to grade the roads, you put that in and it will. It'll show you what the impact on your taxes will be or something like that. I didn't sign into it, but there was an example on the screen. Okay, um in terms of a motion, it'd be in order to take a motion to adopt the calendars as amended, council Cromwell has moved, we adopt the calendars as amended. There's no further discussion, all those in favor. The motion is adopted eight and zero. We are at cruising along, still not time for coffee, item number ten point one F. Ten point one F, council men's, that's you, you have that on the agenda.
Yeah, I just thought I would uh give just a quick uh update at our last meeting, uh October third. We had a meeting at foil regarding the uh with the water water commission. Um work is progressing on the fiber optic line going into the water treatment plant here um to to get them hardline internet. Work on reservoir cleaning actually helped really good this year. Uh with the water being so. Uh mercury, mercury and muddy down down in the for for pumping. It actually, they they drew down the reservoir, so. The edges could be cleaned out of mud, debris and stuff. There's actually a fish in there.
Was that you?
Uh no, I wish it was, but. Don't know where the fish are coming from, but there was a fish in there.
Well, you think you had to get sucked right up the pipe. That doesn't make any sense.
They've been in there for a long time, actually. The fish have been in there since the beginning of. Of uh pumping and and that's when now with the new screen on the intake.
Now they're never going to get through anymore. It's the uh old long term residents that have been. Keeping it well. Taking care of in there.
Um, a little discussion went on uh trying to figure out. Possibly some uh solar, solar power. Uh ideas for up around here are power bills. Are atrocious uh while they're pumping and not and they're trying to lock in. In power right now and and stuff like that, so there was a, there was a good discussion. They're having a little trouble trying to find a provider that's. And and as time changes. You kick on them pumps down in uh and uh raw water pump house and and it's it's. Extremely amount of power that they go, but you know what, we can. That give us the the. Uh perfect time to actually drain down. The reservoir to clean it out to help with cleaner water coming up. Um, so there's, there's. Uh give and take there and then uh. Started on the budget for twenty twenty four. Hope to have it uh passed, hopefully at the next meeting, um maybe not, not, no, hopefully in December. Um, that's the way that. Water commission likes to run is have their budget pass for the members to put into their budgets. So they know what's what the head is. Uh town of Athabasca asked the commission for a uh one year. One year uh extension on. Not having to pay back or pay into the reserves, uh so that's that's being discussed. Probably at the next meeting, uh what the commission is going to decide there. And. That's about it. That was that was pretty low, the end of the meeting.
Um, do you want to move on and share with us ten point one K?
Waste Commission meeting uh last Friday. Uh, so far the uh Eco Mister is working very well uh up there at the regional landfill, it's uh. It's working actually so well that we're not having all any water. Which is, which is great, it's uh working out very well there um. The idea of possibly putting in a. I know we're discussing it, possibly some solar panels up there for creating the own power. To be able to run uh run off the grid up there would be a, would be amazing. Can't, you can't. We found out you can't plant trees. On on the cell, so why don't we put some solar power panels up there, right? So so that was a very good discussion. Uh there's a topsoil study going on right now, um. Or going to be going on, I should say, because uh. The code of practices have. Topsoil replacement on these cells when you're reclaiming it at fifty five centimeters. There could be maybe a couple of spots in Athabasca County that maybe like. Grasslands got some terrific. Black dirt areas and uh Division Nine's got some tremendous. Laptop area, but so they're gonna do a study that would that way, we don't have enough. Black dirt taken off. Topsoil taken off these spots to put fifty five centimeters back on.
Yeah, the the idea is that the the request is to. Is to return it to a standard that exceeded the the natural state and topsoil is the dressing that goes on top of meter of. Compacted clay, so it's not like. There's garbage just below the surface, it's, it's just the dressing on top. Met you, so. And I think they figured the savings will potentially pay for the study if they can get a concession on having to truck in. Black dirt to sit on top of a land.
Yeah, exactly, and and. And let's call spade a spade, there's not fifty five centimeters topsoil out there right now on these on these spots, so it it will, it it'll be a. Economical study for sure, uh town transfer site expansion has been completed uh. So that's up and running that just got completed. And then it was discussed again about the the. Service road that's with the new bridge going in there, there's going to be a service road uh put in there in. And. Town really wants that paved, uh the commission would really like to have it paved also, we had, we had asphalt to the gate before. Why kept me out of asphalt again back there that dealing with transportation? We know what that can be all about, so uh letter of support uh was going to be drafted and sent out to uh. To the town through the commission. And uh for support for the asphalt and and all members around the table were asked to do the same thing. Uh if they could and as your meeting through the RMA or or or. AB munis or whatever, meeting with the transportation ministers to. To bring up the, bring up the discussion with them regarding the asphalt there. It would be a great uh asset to have.
Roads also, just as a reference, the detour for the next year was the. Right, road is realigned and the new bridges is done, so it'll be a. It it'll be the detour route while the while the main highways realigned.
Uh work on the budget this is going on, hopefully to have uh completed here soon again for. For getting it out to the members so they can put it into their budget, so they know what's kind of going on there. EPR uh webinar was uh was held on um. I think it was the, what was it, the fifth or on Thursday and and. And it was uh more of it, it was through the AB munis and it was more to do with uh. How we're gonna get registered, how the municipalities are gonna be registered. Uh Athabasca County for the transfer stations will be registered through the commission. And there's timelines and all this other stuff, this this uh EPR. Uh will not be taking into effect, it's slowly progressing, it won't be taken into effect until actually twenty twenty six. It's the the twenty twenty five stuff is twenty five, yeah, it's gonna start happening, but then the the producers or the the. Municipalities don't have. Don't have any uh um. Waste disposal in in place. Like our Collingtons and Roslands and that. Um, that would be more twenty twenty six. In that area, so. Um, there is another uh. He uh webinar through RMA on October eleventh, that'll give. Regarding the EPR, that'll give their thoughts and that on there.
I I think I've sent the information to all of council on.
And it's a good, it's a good thing to sit there and 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 listen to and and if you have any questions, but uh. We have a strong voice on the CPR. Uh committee with with our. Uh waste commission manager, he's he's right in focus to that, which is great for.
Just to cut you cut in council men's, I think they're recorded as well because we have a committee meeting tomorrow that will overlap that, so none here would be able to attend. The meet, my understanding is the meetings are recorded, so you can send it about here.
Betcha. WCB audit is going on um or or did happen and uh there's going to be a uh. Uh an appeal. Uh we made the motion to appeal the audit uh just due to the fact of they're moving us from one. One part of the organization to another part of the WCB organization and and all of a sudden it's gonna end up. Possibly costing us another twelve thousand dollars. So there there's going to be appeal on that. And then on the uh the last item that we kind of discussed was uh transfer sites, long term strategy report. And that. That's on how we can do better with our transfer sites and uh. Changes and. That report is going to be going out to all members, members councils. And in a letter form to start. To start thinking about what we can do better and and uh. And I don't want to throw too much out there. What they're thinking, but but it's it's to everybody, start the discussion, we need to start discussing is and the EPR is actually going to. Uh change some. Change some ways there also of collecting garbage and and uh and collecting waste, collecting waste and recycling. So 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 that that's uh. About uh all of it there, I I hope to see the letter soon.
Are you um at the conclusion of this section, then suggesting you wanted to make a motion to to provide a letter of support? Uh directed toward Alberta Transportation for the server, having the service road paid, sure. I'll make a note when we get to the end, we'll come back. Um, as a, just because of the this, you know, you've touched on the power com. As a, just because of the, the, you know, you've, you've touched on the power comments a couple of times and I know Fortis and just again food for thought for council. Fortis has a power one-on-one kind of course that they would be eager to present to us if we were interested and could find a time. Because some of the, one of the things that the Water Commission, their power bill has gone up because their peak demand has gone up. Because they've put in more powerful pumps and move water faster, so. What that does is it means they run them for a shorter time, but the, the peak load is higher and that changes the pricing. And there's probably some advocacy work that could happen um. At the provincial level. That would relate more to a time of, time of day pricing, so that it would give them the option to draw those heavy loads at the. You know, in the middle of the night and at times where the, where the demand is lower and power is in fact much cheaper. But that's a probably a different discussion. Now, uh, the next item on the list is actually ten point one L, Councilman Minz, your name's beside though.
At the basket watershed council uh meeting September twenty first, um, it was in person in town at the train station. And we didn't stay at the strange. Uh, councillor Chamsik and myself handed over a county flag with signatures. Uh, on, on through the canoe brigade, uh I want to game thank councillor Chamsik for. For. Getting, obtaining all these signatures and that. It was very, uh, you could tell by the uh, by their faces and that. They were very overwhelmed with actually getting that flag and and from the county and. And uh, and they thanked us very much for that. It was gonna be hanging. Hanging in the office there and uh and uh it was, it was a great. It was a great gesture anyway, so. Um. Let's see. So out the uh, Athabasca Watership Council has, has grown immensely in, in the eyes of, of the provincial government in the, in the uh. Environmental end and uh they are. They've climbed up. Uh, immensely on the grants and everything. Um. And that's, I think, due to the executive director, Petra and, and, and the team that she has. Uh, working with her. Um, they're, they're actively looking for grants and, 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 and are able to obtain them. Which is, which is great because then that puts in more. More studies, more uh. Stuff going on in, in, in the Watershed Council's region, so. Another uh. Thing to come through the emergency succession plan. Uh. There was a draft of uh. Succession planning for the director, if short term and long term. That was a, that was a great read and uh. It's point blank on, on if the executive director has to leave for, for three months to. Six months or if the executive director leaves, it's, it's just an idea of how. How everything progresses through the Watershed Council. Um. So there's, there's, there was some uh. There's been lots of studies done on the water, uh, the Tuatna Creek, Tuatna River. They call it a river, I call it a creek, um, especially in the town and the county, especially in uh for uh bank stability. And I seen in a paper that uh, that the Watershed Council had went to. The town to discuss um some ideas of how they can help through. Down in around the headwaters of the Tuatna. And uh. And, and then the uh, I think they want to come and talk to Athabasca County regarding the same thing and around some of our bridges and, and. Stabilities along the trails. Uh, stuff like that. I know the town is actually looking. They would like to see them start studying a little bit more on the Muske Creek now. Uh, cause they're in, it's, it's working so well on Tuatna Creek that uh and, and especially around the. Tuatna Creek or mean the Muske Creek Trails, so. So looking at bank stability ideas, stuff like that there. Um. Then after lunch, uh, Ashley Johnson, uh. We all met down by the Tuatna Creek there and she did some extreme science program, water quality sampling and, and stuff like that. So we got to watch what they do with the school kids. We, we got to see what uh. What they hand out to the school kids for being able to test water themselves and, and understand. It, it, I think it's just a great way of education for the young kids to understand what's happening in the creeks and rivers and stuff like that, so. Food for thought. That's the next year is the fifteenth anniversary of uh Athabasca Watership Council. And uh, uh, so we'll be discussing celebrations, some ways of celebrating the fifteen, fifteen years. Uh, I did not know this, but the twentieth anniversary of Water for Life Program is this year. Yep, someone, and lots of great information comes out of there. You can just. So, yeah, and then the next meeting is in uh, I think it's November. You know, it'll be at Spurs Grove.
So, thank you. You're, you're coming up next after, there's one uh brief intermission and then then you're back on deck. Um, my intent would be to finish item ten and then break for a brief recess as we move into close, just so that everybody's aware and. Plus, we need a break sooner. Uh, I put ten point one W on the list, uh, which is Greater North. That's, you know, a board that I'm proud to be a part of and uh because Greater North is such a well managed organization. Uh, the board spends their, you know, a lot of time focused on governance and. And uh, planning for the future. So a couple of things that I think are important to share um. As part of the, the continuity of uh leadership at the board level, uh, the board has. Fourteen municipalities comprise the foundation uh plus one member at large. The uh member at large for the last number of years has been Carol MacArthur from the Lacklavish area and her term was expiring. Um, Carol has been, uh, I, I think probably Dr. MacArthur, but. Reappointed for a, another three-year term. Um, and uh, the intention of that appointment was knowing that councils will change in two years. It's to keep that experience at the board level through a transition of councils and potentially board members. It's one of the most disruptive things for, you know, boards like that is when we rotate board members around, they, you spend a lot of time learning how the. Organization works and not a lot of time getting work done. So, um, so that uh member of large position is secure for the next three years as. We transition and I suspect at that time, um. The next cycle would be the time when, when that position is alternated with somebody else. Um, the C, long-term C O, um. Shirley Surgeoner has announced to the board and this is nothing a secret that she intends to retire by this time next year. And so while the exact details are being worked out for uh the, the, the timing, which will be next summer, fall range. Um, the uh succession planning that goes around the stable transition and management. Um, G N F runs on a administrative staff of three point five people. It's um. It's very efficient. They pinch their pennies till the beaver squeaks or the nickels rather, like. It's, they work hard on managing their money. Um, so there's not a lot of. Sort of fat in the organization. Um. So knowing that that's coming, uh, the board, um, and we've, the board is known for a number of uh months that this is. Coming and, and as part of the planning. Um, the uh CFO has been sort of groomed and developed to take that role and has been appointed. The next uh C O when, when uh C O surgeon or retires. So that's a decision that's been made and that will ensure the continuity of leadership and stability and also. Give the administrative team uh the opportunity to backfill the CFO's role and, and build on, build on that. Um, the uh recently you would have heard about uh the, the provincial government announcing an additional sixteen million dollars for capital maintenance. And renewal, C M R funding. Um, I think they do another about ninety million dollars a year on their buildings. Greater North, as you hopefully know, uh manages on behalf of the province buildings that are, that are uh. Social housing, it's owned by the province, so they have sort of two branches. They do seniors lodges, which the foundation owns. And they do social housing. The social housing is not part of the requisition. It's its own self-contained uh business unit. Uh, the government owns these buildings and they provide us uh funding to manage them, to maintain them. And ultimately what's happened is, you know, the government has set up a funding level that might have worked when the buildings are relatively new. But as they've aged, it's just not been enough to keep up across the province, so they've added sixteen million dollars. Um, I can tell you that's nowhere near enough and that amount of money could be gobbled up in Edmonton or Calgary alone. We're uh Greater North, probably. If they really put their list together with a couple of elevators that need doing, uh, would be close to two million bucks on our own. But the foundation is continuing to lobby, uh, the applications are in to get our share of that funding. Um, the foundation, uh, some members, chair, vice chair and, and the uh. Leadership met with Minister Nixon two weeks ago. And uh specifically to thank them for the, the announcement and talk about its impacts on the ground and what really is required. Um, it happens that a couple of weeks ago, the uh speaker of the legislature, the Honorable Nathan Cooper was in Athabasca. And so it during that uh visit, I had the opportunity to show him into a couple of those suites. Not that the speaker sits at the cabinet table or even in caucus when the legislature's in session. But they do have obviously contact with the ministers and uh. They're able to say, this is great, but here's an example of a unit that's off market and this is what it would take to put it back on market. Um. And when there's a housing shortage, which we hear regularly, um, you know, it's in the media lot and we know from the, looking at our communities. Uh, it's a shame to have some of these units not on market, but. Uh, the foundation is not going to put uh things back. Units back on market where there's no dignity in the housing. I mean, people should have dignity where they live and some of these units we, um. You couldn't in good conscience ask somebody to live in them in their current condition because of how they've been left by a move out tenant. Um, and then uh the foundation, the, the, you know, probably the most significant and for long lasting. Project of significance right now that we're still working on is the capital replacement reserve funding. And uh the, the um. The main two buildings are about twelve years old. And there's not been a lot of money set aside for long-term replacement renewal of those, those assets. Um, and that's because of how the funding structure is built. That money comes out of requisitions to get it out of requisitions. We need permission from. The municipalities. So the uh. Capital replacement reserve study is, I think, has been awarded now. The time, just based on the timing, it should have been awarded last week. Um, and uh, we've been working as a board to. Uh, make sure there's support among all the municipalities. And right now there is one municipality that. Held out last year, I think probably because they had inaccurate information about their role in the foundation or their role as it relates to the foundation. How the money gets collected, what gets done with it. And so the board has been working hard to uh provide them education and, and advocate with those counselors. Um, including. I think it was uh Monday, two weeks ago that uh we had a meeting with them in uh, in their community, just to. To share, we brought out one of the government representatives and, and just to talk to them about kind of how all that works. Um. And then uh, you know, obviously have been looking at the, the mandate letters that come with the minister out to the, the. New minister, I guess, and looking at how that fits with uh what's happening, including, you know, the review and uh. The potential expansion of, of the lodges in the future. Although I can tell you. It's almost impossible to look at an expansion until you've got. Some money to, to help with your end of it. Yeah, and um, and so until, till some of those reserve funds get set aside and we're, we're adequately looking after what we've got. Um, it's, you know, pretty difficult to, to start looking at expanding. Um, that also is coupled with an analysis that the board does every month of our vacancy and right now the vacancy trends, the waiting list trends. Suggest that we're not at a spot where we're gonna need to build right away. I think that's the big stuff there. I mean, there's little things, you know, boiler croaked over at Lackelta. That sort of for me reinforces the uh, the need to have these reserve studies done so that the, the assets that were. Were trusted with the safeguarding or, or stewarding, we're, we're in a position to look after them as they go. Um, it would also create opportunities to. Where we could match it with other grants, because often grants are required a matched funding. With some of the unrestricted reserve, um, to look at trying to improve the efficiency of these buildings. The foundation, I think, year to date has spent between fifty-five. And sixty thousand dollars strictly on carbon tax. And that, of course, is money that just evaporates. So if, if there's a way to be more efficient in how we. Run the buildings, the, the board is certainly up for doing that, because if you can operate them. Or economically, that just leaves more money for other important things that they offer inside. And that. Is what I have to share about. Greater North. And, and now as promised. Well, I, I, it's been a, no, it's been a busy month. Um, ten point one A C, councilman, the floor is yours. Again, and again, and again.
I guess, uh, yeah, this is, this is the exciting one that I have on the water, uh, waterline study, extension out Island Lake. Had a meeting uh October fifth, ten thirty AM, but through Zoom. Myself and uh C O Beck was uh. In attendance for the Zoom meeting and down. But the end of there's some, which was nice, so, um. It's been decided to go with option one, option one comes uh, comes through town, doesn't not, does not go across the river, goes directly uh. Directly west and then out to, to nine mile corner and then down. North to, to Island Lake, um. Uh, it looks like the other option is for sure to come with a designated line out of the water treatment plant. And go down underneath town and uh through town and then straight out west. Uh, distribution pump. Uh, or I mean, uh. Uh, to get. More pressure, pressure pumps will be put in at. Uh, Range Road two thirty-two, um. By the industrial spot there and then, and then, then go from there. To Island Lake without any problem. Um. And then. The idea of, of all of a sudden coming down, they looked at tying into the uh distribution and of, in the town of Athabasca. One point down by the uh. Truck fill, oh, water, uh, raw water pump house, but. With the old, uh, with the old lines and everything running down through there, they've already had trouble with, with uh. Breakages and, and leaks on that line. They, they decided, no. Cause it's actually the, the water, when it leaves the water treatment plant. Halfway down the hill, it gets cut down in pressure. There's pressure release valves there. Holds back the pressure. Um, then they looked at uh possibly tying in over by the university, but that reservoir would have to be. Holding the reservoir would have to be built. To be able to handle it. So the best way to come through town is a designated line. And there was talk of when it hits the bottom of town, uh, before it continues on west again about hundred and fifty P S I. With the, the, the amount of flow that comes down through there, so it'll be made to handle that, but. That's why there's only one. Uh, spot where it needs to be at, at halfway through where it needs to be repressurized. Um. Then all of a sudden it got thrown into us that uh they were, the town, town thought this was a great idea because then we could tie in. They could tie into the. To the new line and, and. Fill into Rupert Reservoir real quick, faster than what they can do right now. So I said. Hopefully that is not in the study, which it isn't. It was just a. People thinking outside the box, I guess, so. Um. So that's pretty well, the way it looks is the, the line uh. From town. Booster pump at two thirty-two. Follow highway to uh reservoir uh for truck fills. For commercial trucks would be in around Baptiste Lake area somewhere in there. And then at the uh very north end by Island Lake would be a. Uh, a direct hook to the line for truck fills where, where you can fill up small tanks, but. Uh, the commercial truck wouldn't be able to fill up there. Take too long. They could fill up there, but they'd be sitting there waiting to be like a. A garden hose to them, uh, filling up their truck. So, so that's why you need one. Reservoir uh built there. For commercial use. Um. A new water plant compared comparisons to the new water plant. If they did one at Island Lake. A new water plant compared comparisons to the new water plant, if they did one at Island Lake with a. Uh the line coming up from the river. That'd be around thirty three million dollars. Just just for that water plant, so. Let's shut that down. The water line from the water treatment plant to Island Lake. Fifteen point three million with a thirty percent uh contingent contingency built in there. So it's it's in around the the ten million mark. And the uh. Uh water for lake grounds, ninety percent, the rest would be about one point five, one point five, three million that would have to be paid for. As long as we get the grant, right? Um.
That was ninety percent, yeah.
Water for like grants are ninety percent. Um, so the hard questions start now is uh. The governance and asset management of. My thoughts right off the hop, and I'm not scared to tell them is or say it in here also is that uh the Water Commission would look after it. They would, they. They know water, that's right. So there's no use, uh we use another municipality coming in saying, hey, we'll we'll take it over, I don't think you'll have any problem with that, so uh. And then the next meeting will be in November, uh early November, uh so we can actually get. So that the 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 big questions of asset management and governance will be answered then hopefully and uh. So we can try to get this uh grant to to the uh proper spot so we can we can obtain the money. So that's where we're sitting right now, the next meeting will probably be just a quick Zoom meeting again and then we'll have a for the final meeting, it'll be in. Late November would be. I suggested here, Athabasca County Council Chamber. Remember go from there, so that's just a quick up.
It sounds like a lot of good news. Progress, um it would be in order to accept a motion to accept the reports, councillor Chamsik has moved to accept the reports. All those, any discussion? Oh, okay, yep, um. On the question of the adoption, the motion to accept the reports is presented, all was in favor. That's eight and zero, the motion is adopted, council men's wanted to make a motion to.
To get uh look to write a letter of support for uh.
To Alberta Transportation. Yeah. Councilman has moved that the county provide, write a letter of support to Alberta Transportation to uh in support of having the service road paved. Pass the waste commission site right in the town. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor. The count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted, it would be appropriate to accept a motion to enter closed session, council Cromwell has moved, we go into closed session, all those in favor. Eight and zero, the motion is adopted, I would like to. And when you unmute us, okay, we have uh closed session, uh motion is made by council capitanic to leave closed session, the vote was eight and zero. And uh. Now regarding eleven point one councillor Holland has made a motion to. Direct administration to respond to Aspen view with the four priority questions as discussed in closed session. If there's any further discussion, seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor. We are eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Council Cromwell, uh regarding eleven point two.
Thank you, uh to provide the quotes obtained for the heating issues with Amber Valley Community Hall to the representatives of at the hall for them to manage. And to express to them that the county funds are not available for this project at this time.
So council Cromwell has moved that um the county will provide quotes obtained for the heating issues at the Amber Valley Community Hall to the representatives of the hall for them to manage. And to express to them that no county funds are available for the project at this time, is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion, all those in favor. That is carried eight and zero, the motion is adopted. Eleven point three councillor Minns has moved to accept the information for the. To accept the information from, to accept information. To accept the report for information. If there's any further discussion, seeing none on the question of the option, the motion, all those in favor. Eight and zero and the motion adopted. Yet uh someone want to move that we adjourn. Councilman Minns moves adjournment at. E eleven fifty five AM, that motion is carried eight and zero.